Shall we begin? Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good afternoon, everyone. And before we go into our invocation, allow me to say these few words. When I first came on council, one of the first individuals I met was Bob Jones. And he said, "You don't remember me, do you?" I said, "No, not quite." He said, "You coached me in football." I said, "Oh, okay." And then he said, "I was on the Buckeyes." And I said, "Wow." They lost to Buckeyes, lost three games in three years. Very good team. And then he said, "I play a center for you." And I was really struck. Because during that time, they didn't have special rules for a center. And you had to snap the ball and stand his ground. And on teams that I coached, the quarterback, one of the most important players, it was the center. Because he started everything. And when he said that, I knew the character that the man was made of. And for some unusual reason, I watched his reports. And I had a tear in my eye all the time because I remembered our conversation when he introduced himself to me when I came to council chambers. And so at this time, before we go into the invocation, could we just have a word of silence and pray? Thank you. Our Father in heaven in Cartersville town, with humble ears and devout love hearts, thank you for your grace and mercy and your tender love and care. We thank you for the dedication that the city governments, department heads, bring to their jobs and the confidence and satisfaction that's delivered to all the citizens of Cartersville, Georgia. As they snuggle warm in their homes, have cold and hot running water in all the comfort of home, while the city works 24/7 to provide those services. While we pray that you continue to direct us and guide us and keep us on one accord as we do the business of the city. We ask these blessings and all blessings in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie Hides, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Kerry Roth, Ward 3. Calvin Cooley, Ward 4. Gary Fox, Ward 5. Taff Rin, Ward 6.
Thank you, Julia. Before we do move forward, I want to thank Calvin for those words for Bob. And you know, times like this in our position where you're supposed to be strong, and I just don't feel like being strong. Like all of you, we love Bob. And he certainly was exemplified all that was good about Cartersville and about dedication and being a good person. And you know, Bob didn't have to tell you who he was. He just kind of showed you every day. And those are my favorite kind of people. And just want to take a moment, as again Calvin eloquently did, and just kind of express our sadness at our loss of our friend. And I know that you know, the Cartersville family is hurting. And so for all of you, I'm sorry. And certainly for Lana and Owen, his wife and son. We just extend those sympathies and those condolences to them as well. And in the coming days, they'll know that if they need us, we'll be there for them because they're still part of our family. The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from February 4th. And council, you've had an opportunity to review those. And now would be the opportunity to make any additions or edits, and if not, a motions in order.
Motion to approve.
On favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Reed, go ahead and follow that. Give us some good news.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. You see on the screen here, I'm joined by our Georgia Main Street Director, Jessica Reynolds. I am pleased to announce to you guys that downtown Cartersville, Cartersville in general, has been granted JEMs designation through the Georgia Main Street Program. It is the highest designation a Main Street program in our state can achieve. And with that being said, I will step aside and let Jessica tell you a little bit more about it. Hello. So you're on the screen here. Yes, you're on the screen here. We can hear you. You're good to us.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jessica Reynolds and I serve as the director of the office of downtown development within the Department of Community Affairs. And I appreciate y'all a lot for speaking tonight. As office of downtown development, we manage the Georgia Main Street Program. I have the pleasure of working with 118 cities across the state, with each of these cities dedicated to the growth of their historic commercial district. As sure aware, the Main Street approach provides a balanced path for revitalization with a focus on economic development in the context of the self-preservation. In partnership with the National Main Street Center, participating cities are required to meet ten standards during the annual assessment process in order to become accredited Main Street American cities. During the annual assessment process, we work as a team to identify communities that have gone above beyond to consistently excel at each of these ten standards. These cities are known to us as the weakest exceptional Main Streets of the country. It is because of Cartersville, Cartersville Main Street's commitment to excellence and the stable leadership that I'm here joining you virtually tonight to congratulate the city of Cartersville on being designated as our newest 2021 JEMs community. We see a $6.3 billion private public investment happening downtown. Twenty-one new businesses opening and 55 new jobs being created. Additionally, your Main Street program has attracted almost 100,000 people downtown in the Pacific Northwest. We are all too committed on your dedication to rebuilding the heart of your community. And to recognize the city of Cartersville as a token of our appreciation for your hard work, I'm excited to report to you that we will be getting to you guys with a gateway sign recognizing your designation. And I think I'll have, usually when I do this, I'll be making a personal presentation with the sign, but you just have to imagine the way it feels a little bit. So it will read, "Welcome to downtown Cartersville, that door is an exceptional Main Street city." And we will be sending that to you guys. And I just want to say thank you to Lily. She's been so incredible to work with. Thank you to the entire board of directors. And thank you to the city of Cartersville for our support with the downtown development, Rio Main Street program. It is because of this trio of folks and organizations working together that so much good stuff is possible. And we couldn't do this without you. And the downtown wouldn't be where it is today without the support. So thank you all, and I'm happy to see you.
I can see that yours actually on this end, but can you actually hear us? Okay? No? All right, well, I appreciate it and thank you so much, Jessica. And counsel for your support. And yeah, 33 years of Main Street, very well deserved, so thank you guys.
Congratulations and thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to personally thank Lily because I know she's put a lot of hard work and effort in this. And it is exceptional for the city of Cartersville to have this, attain this award. And it will help us as we go forward in hopefully attracting new business and redevelopment downtown as well.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Menino, we have a series of first readings. If you'll start us off with AZ 21-01.
Thank you, mayor and council. First, I'll note that they have been, all cases have been properly posted and advertised and reviewed based on the adopted standards. This case and the following case are directly related. I pointed that out in the work session. The representative, Mr. Hollander, is going to, I believe, represent both applications. The first one is property that actually is directly adjacent to Cartersville jurisdiction, the tract that actually met the requirements of annexation. The applicant or representative, Mr. Hollander, lives or owns property 16, 18 to 20 Royal Lake Cove. He had a desire to be in the city jurisdiction based on desire placed in the application. With that, he did coordinate with his neighbor. His neighbor is the one, like I said, does meet the criteria for annexation. If the neighbor's property is approved for annexation, that would make his property eligible for annexation. So again, that's why they're both directly related. With that, it was sent out to several entities that review these for the city as part of the process. There were some concerning comments that came from a few of the entities. And with that, the planning commission did recommend denial of this application. I do believe the representative is here. Haven't met him personally. It's been a pleasure to talk with him, but I have not met him personally, so.
Okay. Questions for Randy at this time? Actually, Randy, I'll ask, and maybe you've got to turn it over to somebody else to answer this, but I know that one of the concerns was the fire hydrant pressure that the fire department had. And I didn't know if any of that data had been updated or if that was...
No, they didn't have any information because it's on the county system. And so they didn't provide any additional comments when they weren't able to get the information from the county at that time.
Okay.
Again, it's not on the city's system, so.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
So you have a question on the main street. One part of the property is the Monmouth, isn't it?
Well, the second application, AZ 21-02, Mr. Hollander's three properties that he owns, if you look on the map behind you... If he does, if the first application, which was AZ 21-01, did not go through, then Mr. Hollander's by himself would not qualify for annexation. The property on the most northern property line is where it touches the city's jurisdiction, Dillinger's property that goes all the way back up, I believe, to Old Alabama Road. So Mr. Hollander's property by itself does not meet that criteria. So his neighbor has applied also. So if the neighbor, if that application is successful, then he is qualified based on the requirements of having at least 50-foot adjacent property, so.
Any other questions for Randy? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of, excuse me, zoning portion, I'm sorry. The zoning portion of AZ 21-01. And anybody wishing to step forward may do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I will add that the zoning portion is R20, and that is the default zoning for annexation, whether you know, zoning requested. And this is R20, my property, same family.
So we'll take up the zoning issue in this particular public hearing. And if you would, sir, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Chad Hollander, 16 Royal Lake Cove, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. So I don't speak in front of people a whole lot, so sorry if I'm not as polished as, you know, I should be. But when I saw the concerns on the report, I thought maybe if I told my story a little bit, it might alleviate some of that. One, the school system, my son already goes to Cartersville Middle School. They've been bus riders their, I mean, car riders their entire lives. So you know, they're not going to take the school bus if we get annexed. I have my own trash system, pickup through waste management. So don't need the, you know, city trash or any of that stuff. I could sign something waiving my rights to that stuff so that it doesn't put a burden on the city for having to come out to services one or two properties. But also, I clocked it today leaving my driveway. One of the things I think Peter Olson had said was he didn't want to create a patchwork of properties out here on the fringe of the city limits. But we are surrounded on the north by the Dillinger property that goes over to Carter Grove. And then Carter, if you were able to zoom that map out some, Carter Grove is completely to our east. So our whole neighborhood is encircled by city property already. I clocked it on my odometer leaving my driveway. I was right at .75 miles to the Carter Grove property that was just rezoned for smaller lots. So we are right there. On top of all that, we've been business owners downtown for a decade, multiple property owners downtown for a decade, sponsored the middle school, fed the football team 600 wings when they whooped Cass. My son played Cartersville Little League baseball. He played city football. My daughter plays SSA soccer right behind the middle school. So for a decade, we've been paying city taxes, acting like city residents, looking like them, but we're, you know, like 50 yards away. So it would be nice to finally get that fixed. So we would love to be a part of the city. I think there's more houses there that could fill in that horseshoe that's already surrounded by city property. You know, maybe we could just be the start. So is there anything I could help explain if there's any more questions?
Well, technically, the property that we're discussing, and I know they're linked together. So just from a technicality standpoint, do you, would you think that the adjacent property owner, since you're representing him or her, would they be, would they have the same feeling as you would about waivers and whatnot?
Both of, they're 65, 64, 65. And they would be here tonight, but they're in Pennsylvania with their daughter for something. So they'll be at the next one. Both of their kids went to the city schools out of district their entire lives. They've lived in that house over 30 years. And he's, yes, he would do the same thing. He's not going to have any more kids. And you know, we have the same trash service and all that stuff. So I have no question that he would waive any rights to any, you know, city utilities that would cost the city any extra money at all.
Mr. Lovell, are waivers like that customary, enforceable? Or what's the, I mean, I need a little guidance from you on that.
They are not customary. You know, once you come into the city, all city services are available to you. There have been some waivers that have been done around the state at various times. Some of them have later been challenged and thrown out. Some have been upheld. It sort of just depends on the circumstances surrounding the individual ones. You know, in this case, you know, although this current property owner may be willing to sign the waivers, you know, problem that a lot of cities have gotten to is, well, what about the next property owner there? You know, whether that's in one year or 50 years. I mean, you know, and that person may at that time then want city, want those city services. Also, you know, for waiving garbage, for instance, you know, we require all city residents to pay garbage, whether, and so there is no waiver available for that. I mean, he may waive the service, but he's still going to be paying the city. And you know, there are issues if you're charging somebody for a service that they're not getting.
Well, and as far as a future resident there, I definitely can't speak for 50 years from now. But I have lived in that house for 20 years. And you know, certainly don't see myself leaving anytime soon.
Any other questions for Mr. Hollander?
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussion? Chief Carter, I would like to ask you, because again, I asked Randy, I know that initially there wasn't a, we're still looking for information about the water pressure, which to me still seems to be an issue or a concern as it is to you. Were you able to get any of that required information to see if, because you're, ultimately, God forbid, something happens, you guys are going to have to be the ones to...
No, sir. We reached out and I checked just as early as today, see if we'd gotten that information. And we had not. We'll continue to reach out, but we've not obtained that information.
Thank you.
Since he's there, I'm just asking a question about the intergovernmental agreement, I think, or the partnership we have with the county. When you look at a space like this, how do we, how do we look at that?
Well, one change on our end of it is right now, we have the automaticated agreement with the county. We will send one engine company to that current residence. If it goes to the city, we'll send two engine companies, the tire war and the battalion chief, and they'll send one engine. So it'll flip the amount of equipment that goes. The only other problem that, and I've really not looked at this part of it close enough, even though we're a Class 1 ISO, his insurance agent would have to take a look to see because we're a 1X. If he doesn't fall within a certain area as far as GPM hydrant flow, location, or whatever, he will not receive the Class 1 benefit. He would receive the X part, which I think would be like a Class 5, was the insurance rated. But that's determined by his insurance company.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for chief? Thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussion from anybody? Anybody got questions from staff?
Mayor, just remember, you still have to have the public hearing on the annexation part after this.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to participate in the public hearing relative to the zoning portion of this request? And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of the hearing for AZ 21-01 and open up the public hearing for the annexation portion of AZ 21-01. And ask anybody who wishes to do so to step forward and speak at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for AZ 21-01 for the annexation portion. And again, first reading, if there's no other discussion needed by council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting, which is? March 4th. I'll now open up the next item, Mr. Menino.
Yeah, I'd like my comments to carry forward from the previous application to this one. Nothing additional to add. They're both interrelated. One depends on, this one depends on the previous application.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing for AZ 21-02, the zoning portion of this request. And again, ask anybody to, who cares who, to step forward and make comment. Mr. Hollander, we could just carry those same comments from the previous one to that. Would that be satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And so is there anybody else that wishes to make comment at this time relative to the zoning portion of AZ 21-02? Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and open the public hearing for AZ 20, the annexation portion of AZ 21-02. And seeing none, step forward. I will close the public hearing for AZ 21-02 annexation portion. And again, council, if there's any other questions or discussion, we can have that now. And if not, we will move forward. Thank you. Mr. Sanders, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you, mayor. We would like to renew the lease agreement we have with RDK Truck Sales for a commercial front loader. The, it's a 13-month lease. We have one currently. And if this is approved, we're asking for the mayor to be able to sign all the documents, the credit application, the actual lease agreement, all the related documents. And if this was, is approved in May, we would give back the truck we have now and get a new truck for an additional 13 months. It's a 13-month lease option. The monthly payment is $6,346 and it's budgeted through the solid waste enterprise fund.
Thank you. Questions for Tommy on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
On favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Chief Carter, you are next up, please, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Respectfully request tonight to approve the purchase of a new 2022 tower truck. And this is a budgeted item that we've discussed for several years. It was actually one of the approved projects under the 2020 splash. The dollar amount was placed in at that time. I believe that was back in 2016, 2017, when that came under development. And this is to purchase a replacement of our frontline tower, which is now a 2004 model. It's been on the line for 16, 17 years. And how we kind of got where we're at tonight is our 2004 model is starting to become a little bit undependable, if you will. We've had several times of repair. Currently, as we speak, it's under repair. The last two fiscal years, we've spent $66,340.83 beyond preventative maintenance. These are just particular repair costs. And where this causes a problem is that the reserve for this aerial is actually a 1994 truck that we purchased. And technically, by NFPA standards and recommendations, we should have removed that truck from reserve or took it completely off the line in 2019. My concern is, the older that the 2004 is getting as a first-out truck, the more time that it's staying down, the more we're having to depend upon our reserve truck, which simply just cannot sustain the workload. In 2004, when we bought that tower, you know, she would get a couple of runs a week. But the tower now runs every day somewhere. Every structure, fire call, every fire alarm call, that tower is rolling today. It's also backup on medical calls for the ATCO, the engine one. It's also backup on vehicle extrication. So the truck has really had a lot of use. What we're seeking is we're looking at purchasing a 2022 Pierce 100-foot heavy-duty platform. You can see the photograph here. After the 2020 vision session with the mayor and council, we formed an apparatus committee that studied our needs, spent a lot of time to build the best possible truck that'll reach into our future. You're talking about a fire apparatus that's going to be on the front line for at least 20 more years. That's what you're looking at. We recommend this truck. It's a single source due to the standardization of our fleet. We've reduced this price by utilizing a competitive bid process through NPP Gov or the National Purchasing Partnership. This is per state Title 36, Chapter 69A, is competitive bidding process. We're asking for the prepay option, which will save us money upfront. This reduces the price by $50,951. And we bring this to you tonight because we've already requested an extension of the 2021 price, which that extension is going to run out on March the 1st. And that was an additional savings of $40,304.99. And that was an additional savings of $40,304.19. So between with the consortium, the prepay option, we were able to reduce the price of the truck to over $100,000. That's basically where we're at. All contracts have been reviewed by legal and approved. We're, have also required in addition a performance bond upfront. Since we're doing a prepay option, we're requiring that of the vendor to protect our investment. And I would ask that you would approve this new tower truck and that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign any of the needed documents to purchase the truck for a total price of $1,292,522. This would be to 10-8 fire apparatus.
Mr. Mayor, also, Chief has done a lot of research on this and has shared in the work session and at the visiting session. This is really our best long-term solution. I know it was budgeted or asked for by the voters for the SPOLOST. And as part of that motion, if it's approved, $1,262,500, which is what was allocated for SPOLOST for this project, would need to be part of that motion to use SPOLOST money that is available to us today.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on this item? If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Listen, we got to hear, we got to hear that motion nice and clear.
I would, I would defer to you. Motion to approve to give the mayor approval to sign all documents through this order, purchase order to approve $1,292,522 using SPOLOST money.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, if I may.
You've already, you've already made the sale, now you're supposed to be quiet.
No, I just, I just want to say, I understand this is a huge purchase for this city. And I want to thank publicly the voters of the community for supporting the SPOLOST, not just this project, but all of it, because this is a shining example of how we're able to get things done and take pressure off the general fund. But also, I want to thank you, the council and the city administration for supporting this. This is a huge project. I'm very aware of it, and, you know, we understand the impact and we're very thankful.
Well, thank you for keeping us safe, and I appreciate the fact that, trying to save us some dollars along the way. So that's appreciated. You're always very conscientious, as all of our department heads are. So thank you for that. Let's see, who gets to follow that one?
Mayor.
Dan, it's all you.
Yes, sir. Travelers Insurance and Vehicle Repair invoices. We had unfortunately an accident involving a city vehicle and another party that we were at fault. The city vehicle was, the repair cost were $8,464.51 through Matthew's Garage. We'll be responsible just for $1,000 that is deductible. The other party vehicle we were responsible for was $10,906.32. It was also another accident. So the Travelers total invoice due to Travelers is $11,229.82. Both are budgeted through our property and casual insurance fund. I recommend those for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Michael Hill. Good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Bring for you tonight a bid that we had put out for sandblasting, priming, painting of the new Transco Delivery Point plus the regulator station located on Brown Farms Road. We had bid it out to three different individuals and only got one reply on that. As I told you earlier, work session, that we did have one of these people. We had tried to contact these folks several times, called today to know if he could still get in on it. Couldn't we tell him it was, he was a little too late on this. But the bid is for $14,500 by, it's Southeastern Natural Gas Services.
Do you feel like that's a competitive market price?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, I sure do.
I mean, just the fact that you only got the one bid. I know you tried to get multiple bids, but you're happy with the price that came back on that?
We had, we had gotten this one guy that came out, that called today. He came out, looked at the job, and he told us he thought it was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 to $15,000. And we just let it, okay, give us paper, you know, we need, need a bid. And Michael Dixon actually called this guy and sent text to him probably a half a dozen times at least. Never got a reply from him. So in the third person, they never replied at all.
All right, all right, well, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Chair or motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael, appreciate that. Dan, you got the next one too, don't you?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is Kenworth Road Tractor Repair for the Water Push Control Plant. It's a 1999 road tractor. They have basically transported biosolids from the water push control plant out to our Taylor's Hill site. It's got a cracked cylinder head, asking for approval not to exceed $10,000 for retail trucking equipment to repair this vehicle.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Dooley, you are up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The electric department needs to hire a directional drilling contractor to bore across parking lot of one of our expanding industrial customers. This will enable us to feed the new transformer that's already, I believe, been approved and purchased for the same project. This option is the cheapest and less time-consuming, less obstructed to the customer, and keep us from trenching across their parking lot and keeping their employees from being in the park and deliveries being, being able to be made for their processes. We've obtained a quote from our approved contractor, Southeastern Gas, to do the work. The amount come, came out to $8,290, and we are requesting council approval for a cost not to exceed $8,800. The little extra is just in case there's an obstacle that causes an increase in the length of the bore.
Okay, thank you. Questions for John on this item? I do want to, thank you. I know this customer continues to expand, and I know a lot of that has to do with the hard work that y'all put towards that. And, you know, very dedicated to providing service to everybody, especially this customer. So we appreciate their business, and we appreciate your efforts to keep them happy. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John. Before Tom comes up, we do have three items to add to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to add those three items.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Three items added. Mr. Lovell, take it away.
Mayor, the first item is an easement agreement with Hugh and Angela McLean in the Water Department, where we're going to be able to install some water improvements on their property in the future. And in the short term, we'll provide them temporary service as they construct new homes. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Keith.
The next item is a deed of dedication with Starlight Homes for Parkway Station off of Grassdale Road. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And final item for you, Mr. Lovell.
It's an amendment to Ordinance Section 5-35, which deals with the impound fees charged to animals at the animal shelter. The county is going up on their fees on March 10th. So we need to go up on our fees so they are the same as the counties when they assess those. Those fees will be going up from 30 to 50, 60 to 100, and 120 to 150, depending upon the days that you're actually in there. It is recommended by staff for your approval. This is just a first reading, and at the next meeting, you'll have the second reading. And this will go into effect on March 10th. Until such time, the current rates will remain as is.
Gotcha. Any questions for Mr. Lovell on this item? Other than the fact that said that the days that we'll be in there, I don't plan on being in those cages.
Well, you know.
Our animals might be.
You never know, Mayor.
You never, you never can tell. Thank you, sir. We'll conclude with the finance report. Mr. Renner, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you, our little mayor and council? Tonight, we'll be looking at the financial report for December 2020 comparing to 2000, December 2019. The general fund revenue decreased over last December by $2.1 million. Expenses increased by $502,000. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax have a decrease here of about $80,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about $72,000. Water and sewer fund revenue decreased over last December by $549,000. Expenses decreased by $425,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, decrease in debt service expenses, and decrease transfers to the general fund. The gas fund revenues decreased over last December by $987,000. Expenses increased by $436,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased, I'm sorry, decreased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. The electric fund revenue decreased from last year by $841,000. Expenses increased by $558,000 due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund revenues decreased from last December by $75,000. Expenses increased by $38,000 due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid Waste Fund revenues decreased from last December by $268,000. Expenses decreased by $91,000 due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, Fiber Objects Fund revenues increased from last year by $11,000. Expenses increased by $27,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Looking at the cash position of the city for the month of December, you'll note that the unrestricted cash decreased, restricted cash, restricted cash increased. And one of the council folk wanted to know what the SPOLOST accounts were, balances were as of December. SPOLOST 2003 had a balance of roughly $37,000. SPOLOST 2014 had a balance of $532,000. And SPOLOST 2020 has a current balance of December of nearly $2.5 million.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things to point out for the month of December. You recall that the council approved the one-time bonus to employees. So that's, that's one of the reasons personnel expenses were up a little bit more this month. But for the general fund, one of the things that I've looked at and worked with Tom on is, there's a couple of prior period adjustments in the 2019 number. So if you take those out, the equation that even with the COVID year for 2020, we're doing okay in, in the general fund. Obviously, utility one, utility funds are doing pretty decent. Gas fund is still showing a net loss through the summer, but through January, it significantly has some improvement there. But overall, like I said, with COVID in effect for this year, we're doing, we're holding line within the general fund, which was, as the mayor explained earlier this year, we had a tight budget. We put in there, had to make a lot of cuts, and we're still, right now, in a net profit.
I have a question about the SPOLOST. I know that Peter Olson typically sends out the money, the tax collections for the month. And what he sent us showed an increase over last year, but yet our numbers are showing that there's a decrease over last year.
There was, if you remember, there was a, a part of, I believe it was October, distribution test was for prior year. So that had to be taken out from 2021 and put into 2020.
Okay.
I believe that was $116,000 roughly.
Okay.
Sometimes you have those corrections where they find a taxpayer was either, we didn't get that into our account properly. They gave it to another entity and, or we, they overpaid and we had to pay them back.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions for Tom on the finance report?
How long do we anticipate this '03 SPOLOST, $37,000 to continue to be there? Is that a project that we've never done? I know that we've been throwing money towards Doffin.
We've been, you know, I think we've been running that account down for, because the category of road projects, we've kind of been holding on to that. I'm sure, I'm sure if you ask Tom, Tom would rather close that out, not have to monitor it anymore.
Yes, that is correct. Which, I'm trying to remember, I don't have that front.
2003 SPOLOST is being used currently for the Doffin Ferry Project. The SPOLOST 2014 funds, they're available for use really at any time.
So 2003, to answer your question, Jase, basically is the one we are, we got the state extra $600,000 approximately for engineering costs. In order to, when we pay invoice, we have to submit that reimbursement. So we kept it open and keeping that 2003 fund open so we can keep running that money through there because it's additional grant funding through the city. So that little bit we have left in the bank is kind of for us to keep that account open. Eventually, once we get done with that $600,000, which are, I think we've only spent a couple hundred thousand, I believe.
I want to say close to 300, if you don't mind me doing that?
So we're about halfway spent on those extra engineering funds we got from the state. So that's why we're keeping that 2003. I'll have to look at 2014 and see what's remaining on there. Let's see if we can apply those funds towards.
But it would be nice to get them closed out, but that was, that was going to be, they need to stay a little bit longer.
Gotcha, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other business that needs to come before council?
Yes, sir.
That being said, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Both.
There you go.
Jase, that's your trailer out there. Don't you, and you have a-